Ready out there? All right. All right, I'll call the Thursday, May 23rd, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Langford, will you lead us in the pledge?
If you wouldn't mind rising with us, please, to pledge allegiance to our great flag, please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Staff, roll call.
All commissioners are present, with the exception of Commissioner Lowry, who's excused this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Public comment, item number four. This time we'll take public comments that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. Wow. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Public comment? Seeing none, moving on. Request for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are none.
Okay, great. We'll move on to consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of April 18th, 2024. Would anybody from the audience wish to comment on the minutes? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners, anybody for a motion for a second?
I'll move to adopt.
We have a...
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, okay. Item number two, the Petty Family Trust Encroachment, PA 2024-0067. Site location at 521 Larkspur. Staff, will you just give us a, just a quick synopsis of this, and then I'll bring it back?
Yes, Chair Elmore. Brad Summers, your City Traffic Engineer, I'd be happy to do that. Item two on the consent this evening is indeed a homeowner request to waive City Council Policy L6 related to private improvements within the public right-of-way at 521 Larkspur Avenue. 521 is located at the intersection of Larkspur and Third, within Crona del Mar, and the encroachments, or the private improvement improvements are related to some vinyl fencing. Public Works has reviewed the application in the residence and these private improvements that are existing in this area. We found that they are consistent with the neighborhood, nor do they diminish the rights of the public within this area, and with that, Public Works is supporting this waiver. Should the Commission choose to move forward with this waiver, it should be noted that one of the conditions of approval would include the homeowner entering into an encroachment agreement within one year of the approval of the encroachment permit. We have more information, of course, in the staff report that we provided. I'm, of course, available as well, and I believe we have the applicant in the audience.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. Commissioner, you have a question from staff?
Just confirming, I saw in the report, but this can be changed at any time if staff wants to put it, or if we want to put in a sidewalk or something, right? We can revoke it.
Yes, that would be one of the items within the encroachment agreement would allow the city to take that land back essentially for whatever public improvement we deem necessary. The applicant or the homeowner at that point would be required to remove it at their cost.
Great. Vice Chair, question of staff?
Yeah, just a quick question. On page 41, it seemed to indicate that it was going to be relocating the six-foot fence. Is that? And actually throughout the document, is it? Is it being relocated, or is it staying where it's at?
Yes, that's a good catch. Thank you for that. It is being relocated. It is pushing further back towards the property. That was something that Public Works identified, and that would improve the site distance coming out of the driveway.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any ex parte communications? I'll start down with Commissioner Bartow.
None.
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 Okay, great. This is not a public hearing, but I will allow anybody from the audience to, if they wish to speak on this, to have an opportunity. Great, seeing none. I'll bring this back to the Commission for a discussion and/or a motion. Commissioners, Vice Chair?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Great, we have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on, item number three, the Smith Family Trust Encroachment, PA 2024-0045. Site location, 3015 Cliff Drive. More synopsis would be great.
Sure, thank you again. Brad Summers, your City Traffic Engineer. Similar request to item two, this is a homeowner requested waiver to City Council Policy L6 related, again, to private improvements within the public right-of-way. As with the other item, Public Works has reviewed this at depth. We find that it is consistent with the neighborhood, again, and would not diminish from the rights of the public within the area. Again, we do have the condition that they would enter into an encroachment agreement within a year of approval, should it happen, for this encroachment permit.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Any none? Okay, Commissioners, ex parte communications? Commissioner Bartow?
None.
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 Okay. This is not a public hearing item, but I will allow anybody from the audience to wish to speak on this, have an opportunity. Seeing none. Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to us for the Commissioners, for a motion, discussion. Commissioner Harris?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Call for a vote, please.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, all right, moving on. Item number four, the Residence at 1600 Dove Street, PA 2022-0297. The site location is 1600 Dove Street. I believe we have some Commissioners, or Commissioner?
I have to recuse, a business partner has a financial interest in the project.
Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair Elmore. Planning Commissioners, I'm Liz West-Morland, Senior Planner, and the project I'll be presenting tonight is the Residence at 1600 Dove Street. First, to orient you to the project, it's located in the heart of the airport area between Dove Street and MacArthur Boulevard. It's located adjacent to the approved but not yet constructed Newport Crossings project, which is a mixed-use project in the vacant parcel that you see on your screen. In terms of land use and zoning, the existing general plan designation is mixed-use horizontal, and this is a designation that already allows for residential or mixed-use with the conversion of existing buildings that are on-site. The zoning is Newport Place, and this project is within the residential overlay of that planned community. Additionally, the project is located near the airport area, or within the airport area, within the Airport Environs Land Use Plan. It's within Safety Zone 6, as well as the 60 decibel noise contour, and both of these areas allow for residential use. The project consists of the demolition of the existing office building. It's a relatively large office building that you can see an image on the bottom left of your screen. It's about 60,000 square feet. It's on a 2.5-acre site. The project also includes the development of 282 apartment units. 254 of these would be market rate, and 28 would be reserved for, as affordable for very low-income households. It's important to note that this project only includes the high-level entitlements at this point. There is no specific project designed before the Planning Commission tonight. In the future, when the project is designed, if approved, they would need to come in for a site development review with the Planning Commission. What we do know about the project is it will likely be a podium-style construction with parking on that first level and seven stories. It will be about 100 feet high. On the left, there is a representative site plan. This might not be exactly what the project's site plan looks like in the future, but it gives you a good idea of what it might look like. Terms of entitlements, the applicant is seeking a general plan amendment. However, as I mentioned before, the existing designation allows for residential use, so this general plan amendment is only to add an additional 49 dwelling units to the property to increase the base density. Project includes affordable housing, so an affordable housing implementation plan is required. This is a document that shows how they're going to comply with that 15% requirement of the base units, and any kind of incentives or concessions, as well as development standard waivers that they're seeking. Because the, the project is located in the airport area, development agreement is required. And in terms of environmental clearance, a traffic study has been prepared for the project and an addendum to the 2006 General Plan EIR for SEQA. I'd like to walk you through the dwelling unit summary. So first, we start with the base units, and these are based on a conversion of the existing office building that's there today, so that it's net neutral for traffic. So that's how we end up with 139 base units. As I mentioned, the applicant's seeking a general plan amendment for an additional 49 that would increase the total base units to 188 dwelling units. Because the applicant is providing 15% of affordable housing, they are able to achieve a 50% density bonus of 94 units, which added up gets us to 282 apartment units. These are some conceptual elevations. Again, it may not be exactly what the project looks, looks like, but it gives you a good idea. In terms of the density bonus, the applicant is seeking three development standard waivers, and the applicant is entitled to unlimited development standard waivers. These are things that make the project physically fit on the site. So first, the park dedication requirement. We typically require a half-acre park to be dedicated. In this case, the site is only two and a half acres, so it would not be feasible. Also, the residential density range. We have a residential density range of this area of 30 to 50 dwelling units an acre versus the 113 dwelling units an acre that the applicant is proposing. And it's important to note that this includes both the base units, the general plan units, as well as the density bonus units. They're also seeking a waiver of the height to allow for 100 feet versus the 55 feet in the planned community. In terms of incentives or concessions, the applicant is entitled to three of these, and these are things that make the project pencil out. First, to modify the affordable unit mix, this is a pretty typical one that we see to change the percentage of affordable units so that it is not exactly like the market-rate units, and then a partial waiver of in-lu park fees. So instead of providing the half-acre park, we require in-lu payment for that park, which is around 1.8 million. The applicant is requesting to waive a portion of that fee as part of a concession. Now moving into the development agreement, this development agreement would be for a 10-year term, and the general public benefit fee would be subject to CPI after two years. And it's important to note that these fees are based on a per-unit cost. So the totals that you see here are based on the 282 dwelling units that are proposed. So for public safety, there is an item for roughly 285,000. The reduced park-in-lu fee we discussed, that's 714,000, and then an overall general public benefit fee of about 3.5 million, for a total of $4.5 million. Again, in terms of environmental clearance, the addendum to the 2006 EIR concluded that no additional environmental review is necessary for the project, and it's consistent with the EIR that was done for the general plan. And then the traffic study was prepared that showed there be a net increase of average daily trips of 624. However, there'll be no impacts to local intersections, and there's no mitigation required. Because this project includes a general plan amendment, it's important that we analyze it for compliance with Charter Section 423. So we have four thresholds that we have to look at for the project to determine whether this is considered a major amendment that would require a vote of the electorate. So first, we look at the proposed project itself. Does it meet any of the four thresholds individually? And then we also have to consider the cumulative development of prior general plan amendments. And when I say prior general plan amendments, I mean amendments that included additional floor area or units. And so in this case, if we go through the thresholds, first, the project would not result in an increase in non-residential floor area. It does not exceed 100 dwelling units, which is the maximum. It would not exceed the AM peak-hour trip threshold or the PM peak-hour threshold, so no vote is required. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution, recommending approval of the project to City Council. And in terms of next steps, we would go in June to the Airport Land Use Commission, followed by any City Council hearings. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Fantastic overview. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Start out. Commissioner... Nope, nope, Celine?
One quick question. How was the park fee, reduced park fee arrived at, that number? Was it a percentage? Was it based on? Just curious.
That was a negotiated number.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? Seeing none, okay. Well, ex parte communications. Commissioner Bartow?
I spoke with a representative of the developer.
None?
None.
None for me.
I spoke with a representative of the applicant as well.
Great, okay. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation.
Here we go. Good evening, Chair Elmore and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Satish Lion, and I'm with the Pacern Group. Thank you for gathering tonight to consider our project at 1600 Dove Street. I prepared a brief presentation, but before I start, I'd like to say a quick thank you to Liz West-Morland. She's done a real great job on working with us and keeping this project on track. I'd also like to thank Jaime and Simone and Yolanda for their contributions. Thank you. The project we are presenting tonight is in partnership with John Saunders. This is the second project we're doing together, the first being the residences at Airport Village. We'd like to thank John and his team for their contributions and partnership. We're fortunate to work with a very talented group of consultants. TCA Architects and Tate Engineering helped us put this entitlement package together. Representatives from TCA and Tate are in attendance tonight. The Pacern Group headquartered in Newport Beach is a family office for Ken Pacern, who resides in Newport Beach with his family. TPG is a long-term investor, owner, and community member. We've made a significant investment in the city, and this comes with our long-term commitment and responsibility to the city and to the community. As Liz mentioned, the project's at 1600 Dove Street, directly adjacent to the previously approved Newport Crossings project. I'm not sure you're all aware, but the question of who has the right to own and develop the Newport Crossing project is a subject of ongoing litigation. Although I cannot go into the details, TPG is optimistic that when the litigation is over, TPG will prevail and become the owner of the project. We want to coordinate the design of both projects to maximize the benefit of the adjacencies and to create a cohesive neighborhood. Because the litigation is ongoing, however, it'd be inappropriate for us to present a site development review at this time. So here's the existing use on the, on the site. It's a four-story office building. It was built in 1975. We believe a new residential project at this location will be a big improvement. So as you know, over the years, TPG has made a significant commitment to developing projects in Newport Beach. We started with one uptown, and since then have designed and entitled four additional projects. That includes 4400 Von Carmen, 13 and 1400 Bristol, and recently, the residences at Airport Village. The slide that we're looking at here shows an image of each of those projects, and though they have a similar look and feel, each design is evolving from the last one. We continue to review unit plans, how we program our amenities, explore materials, and continue to push our design teams on the architecture, landscape, and interiors. The last rendering that you see up here is an early concept for 1600 Dove. While we know it'll be in the family of the other TPG projects, we're committed to designing it to be one of the best one yet, and we'll come back to the Planning Commission with the final design at a future date. So we've reached out to the community with many retailers in the airport area, and they're very excited to see new residential projects get built in the neighborhood. We believe this project, as well as other projects in the airport area, will provide a huge benefit to the existing retail businesses and will ultimately drive new retail investment. I'd like to close our presentation by reiterating our commitment to the city of Newport Beach and our commitment to the airport area. 1600 Dove will bring many benefits to Newport Beach. It'll help the city meet its Reno requirements. It will drive retail and commercial growth, and is a significant step towards transforming the airport area into a vibrant, walkable village. Thank you for your time and consideration. We're available for questions.
Thank you, Satish. While I have you here, do you agree with the recommended conditions?
Yes.
Great. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, okay. Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing to the audience. Does anybody from the audience wish to comment on this item? All right, seeing none. I'll go ahead and, I guess, just before, staff, any comments on this item?
None.
None, okay, okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. At this time, I'll bring it back to this body for a discussion, a motion. I'll start down. Commissioner Langford, anything?
Sure. Just because someone needs to say something. I think our lack of comments are really just because it's such a well-thought-out project. We've digested all the materials, and it looks like another great Pacern project in the airport area. I guess I was seeing something in the news lately about Irvine, and they're planning a lot more stuff in the airport area, too, so I think they're going to be helping on their side of the airport area kind of bring the whole village feel together for us. I know that's always been something that I've wanted out there, is not just like a couple of individual apartment or condo projects, but, you know, a vibrant community, a neighborhood, a village where there's grocery stores and all that stuff, too, and retail. So I like what I'm seeing here, and looking forward to seeing it built.
Great. We... Yeah, Commissioners?
I guess my only comment with this, while I certainly respect all the effort the Pacern Group has put into all the projects they have in the area, it seems this one's really pushing the density. You know, the area starts at 30 to 50, and we're at 113, I think, or something like that. And it just, it's starting to concern me that we're, we just, every, every deal seems to ratchet up just a little bit more. And this one, you know, as I look at it, even, just the starting base is over 50, and then we start adding bonus over bonus, and, you know, and it's just, to me, while I, while I like the project, and again, I'm sure it'll, you know, from a scale, it'll probably look the same as all the rest, it just seems that we're starting to push it just a little too much. Getting over 100 units to the acre in Newport seems a little aggressive. So, just make that comment.
Any other comments or motions? Want to make a motion? Commissioner Langford?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve 24-0675 Residence at 1600 Dove Streets.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second on the item? Well, as the chair, I'll go ahead and second the item.
The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Celine voting no.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Okay, we'll wait for our other Commissioner to come on back in, and then we'll move on Okay, moving on to item number five. This is the Fletcher Jones Airport Shuttle and Parking Facility, PA 2023-0172. Site location, 20071 Birch Street. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. My name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm an associate planner with the Planning Division, and the last public hearing item for your consideration this evening is the Fletcher Jones Airport Shuttle and Parking Facility relocation. Starting out with the vicinity map, both the project site and the existing airport shuttle are located approximately one mile south of John Wayne Airport. The project's site is categorized as general commercial office by the land use element of the general plan. Surrounding land uses are also primarily general commercial office. I would like to note that there are some non-conforming residential uses within this area. There's also residential beyond, and there is general commercial along Bristol Street there. The project's site is located within the Santa Ana Heights Specific Plan. I've attempted to outline the boundary of the Santa Ana Heights area with that dashed line there in blue. So the project's site is zoned Santa Ana Heights Specific Plan Business Park. So a little bit about the existing airport shuttle facility, that's over on Bristol Street. It was approved by the city back in 2005, and it's essentially operated very similarly to its initial approval, with the exception of there is now an opportunity for Fletcher Jones customers to have their car washed and detailed after they drop off their car. So preferred owners are able to come to this site, drop off their car, and board a little shuttle to John Wayne Airport. Fletcher Jones actually applied to, for a use permit in a lot merger back in 2022 to completely renovate this site, redo the circulation, and move that car wash into an enclosed configuration. And that project was approved by this body back in February of 2023. However, since then, Fletcher Jones has reevaluated their business needs within the area and is pursuing a different option for these sites. So rather than renovate the current airport shuttle facility, Fletcher Jones is looking to redevelop these properties on Bristol with a multipurpose automotive inventory facility. They have applied for this entitlement. It is separate from the application you're considering this evening, but it is active in the applied status. So that project is to build a 22,000-square-foot multipurpose automotive inventory facility that'll allow for inspection of vehicles prior to selling them to customers, and minor maintenance, paint touch-ups if need be, car washing, and storage of inventory. So if the relocation project is approved this evening, Fletcher Jones will officially abandon that use permit to renovate the existing airport shuttle. But in order for Fletcher Jones to move forward with this redevelopment project, they need to relocate the airport shuttle facility. So that brings us to the project you're considering this evening, and that is the relocation of the airport shuttle facility from Bristol Street over to this property on Birch Street. Fletcher Jones acquired this property back in 2023. It was developed with a non-conforming residential unit, which has since been demolished, as evidenced by this photo. So Fletcher Jones is proposing to build a new airport shuttle service for preferred owners. They'll provide a total of parking for 83 cars. It functions essentially identical to the, the existing airport shuttle facility, with the exception of theirs, there'll be no car washing at this site and no, no detailing, so no vacuums. Hours of operation are from Monday through, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and on Sundays, they'll open at 6:00 a.m. So diving into the site improvements a little bit more, we've got the 1,100-square-foot reception building and 18-space parking lot. That's where customers will drop off their vehicles or pick up their vehicles. We've got the, the larger parking lot that is behind a set of security gates. Customers will not be going back into that larger parking lot. The staff will valet the cars back there. Customers will board a van to shuttle to the airport in that loading zone that I've highlighted there. There'll also be a trash enclosure, and Fletcher Jones is proposing a, a large amount of landscaping, and that is not only to screen views of the parked cars, but to provide a buffer between the surrounding land uses. In order to implement the project, a conditional use permit is required. So Santa Ana Heights Business Park lists specific uses that are allowed, subject to a minor use permit or a conditional use permit. Airport shuttle is not a specifically listed use. However, the Planning Commission is allowed to approve any use that it finds consistent with the purpose and intent of the Business Park District. I've taken some language from the code that summarizes the purpose and intent of the Business Park, and I've highlighted the relevant portions in bold there. So this is a commercial use that has thoughtful design that intends to prevent negative impacts on the surrounding uses. In order to recommend approval of a conditional use permit, there are five compatibility findings that the project must make, starting out with that the use is consistent with the land use and the zoning, which it is. Next, that the site needs to be suitable for the type of use, and this site, it's rectangular in shape, it's flat, it's, it's suitable for the proposed use, and that the proposed... use will not be a negative impact on the surrounding community. So given the almost twenty-year history of the airport shuttle operating on Bristol Street successfully and without complaints, it's not anticipated that relocating it over onto Birch Street will be detrimental. And like I mentioned earlier, this version of the airport shuttle doesn't have the car washing or the vacuuming, which is the largest source of noise, so it should be even less noticeable. That being said, the project still has conditions of approval to help ensure that compatibility, including the hours of operation, prohibition on late-night activities or noise generating activities, no light spillover beyond the property line, and the van is prohibited from using residential streets to do their pickups and drop-offs, so in order to prevent any negative impacts from spilling into the residential area. Staff does need to add some, three additional conditions to the resolution. These are from the fire department, and they are primarily related to better identifying on the plans the fire access lane and specifying when the van can be in the fire access lane and when it can't. With regards to environmental review, because there is another project that has actively been applied for, staff has evaluated both the airport shuttle project and that future project to avoid the potential of piecemealing. So while the proposed airport shuttle could fit under the Class III, that's the new construction of small structures exemption, we found that the project with the future inventory facility also fits within the Class thirty-two CEQA exemption, and that's infill development projects. So even when evaluated together, the projects are both still exempt from CEQA. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the project. I'm available for any questions. We do have a representative of the applicant here who has a presentation, if the commission would like, and he's also available for questions. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioners, none, okay. Commissioners, any Exparte Communications? Commissioner Bartow?
None.
None?
None.
None?
None.
Okay. All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe the applicant has a presentation. Hi.
My name's Lauren Marshall. I'm with Allegro Civil Engineers. I'm one of the planners there, also here with Austin Hahn. He's a design engineer with Allegro Civil Engineers. We do have a short presentation, however, Jocelyn did a really great job.
Yeah. Feel free to buzz through it if there's anything duplicative.
Yeah, there's not much to add. Again, a little bit of history, that was already really covered. The current facility will remain open if the conditional use permit is approved tonight until that new facility is constructed. And so, yeah, there was a demolition permit that was approved early two thousand and twenty-four, and that's why, as you can see, those residential houses in the yellow box are no longer there. It looks like that. Everything's been covered, truly. And then, again, this is our proposal, more site design for you guys to look at. If you have any questions to on-site design, architectural questions, Austin has for you.
Great, thank you, Lauren. Yeah, one sec. While I have you there, do you agree to the recommended conditions?
Yeah.
Yes, you do. Great, thank you very much. At this time, commissioners, do you have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Harris, why don't you go first?
Just curious on the nine PM close. Is that just, it's better operated that way? I figure there's late flights coming in, too. That's usually what it's for. Okay, no, I mean, I think they're later flights. Is that a concern at all in the future, or that...
I don't believe so, I think.
I mean, you're clearly not asked for it, so it's fine, but...
Good evening, my name's Austin Hahn. I presented the project back in February of two thousand and twenty-three, and at that point in time, there was a similar comment that was made, and we're, we then said that we were amenable to expanded hours, and that remains the same today.
Yeah, if you guys are good with it, that's fine. I just ask, you know, curious. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just like to follow up on that. Did you ever, do you, I'm sorry, excuse me, I apologize. Did you ever need them? I mean, was there ever people stranded at the airport after nine o'clock?
I don't have empirical data that shows that. We do have all the trips and pickups and everything that's happened over the last year that we used for the traffic study, but I think you'd need anecdotal evidence from the Fletcher Jones folks if that was occurring.
Fair enough, thank you.
Great. Other questions? Commissioner Bartow?
Just a brief question. The property to the north does have a residential building. I know it used to be occupied as residential. Is that no longer residential? I don't see it called out anywhere.
I believe the property to the north is a vacant commercial property, if I'm correct.
If you go back a slide, you can see it. There you go. On the far right there. Maybe it's commercial. I only, this is a family thing. We owned that property twenty-five years ago, and I know that there was residential there then, but beyond that, if it's not residential, no problem.
Okay, any other questions of... No, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the comment, public, to the audience. Comment to the audience.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I believe the original purpose of the specific plan and changing what was a residential area into a business park was to remove the incompatible uses because of the airport noise and safety issues. And so I think it's good to see that the city is pursuing a project that removes what apparently wasn't incompatible use, namely residences on this property. I'm just curious how it was possible to remove the residences, because I thought for this last several years, we had a state requirement that you cannot remove existing residential density, even if it's non-conforming. So I'm just curious, were the residences demolished, relocated to some other location, or how did we avoid, I forget what the S P number is, how did we avoid that problem? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Staff, any comments for the record?
I have just two comments. To answer Commissioner Bartow's question about the unit to the north, Jocelyn, at our last site visit, confirmed it is vacant, and it has been used for some commercial uses in the past. I think it was like a limousine business. And then regarding the loss of density, so the Housing Crisis Act did prohibit housing projects from losing density, so any housing project cannot result in a net loss of units. That law was recently amended, and it became effective, I think, January first of this year, to also apply to any kind of project if it involved demolition of protected units. In this case, I believe the demolition was approved last year, in November.
Right, cool. Yep, got it. Okay, great, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to this body for a discussion or a motion. Commissioner Langford?
As someone who's utilized the service, I'm excited to see that it is... I like the relocation, even though it's not very far away from the original location. Now you don't have to travel down Bristol, you know, in the opposite direction and then loop around, so all the, like, saved miles and gas and vulcanized rubber and people's time makes me really happy as someone that just hates waste. It seems like such a waste to go down there. So just going on Birch is going to be great, so looks good to me.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Yeah, Commissioner Rosin?
I like the idea of the location here, and I wanted to maybe potentially propose that we allow the applicant to expand the hours till closing of the airport, which I believe is something that we did last time. So add that as a potential option for the applicant, and I would support this project.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, Yolanda, would I just open up the public hearing again and then ask the applicant if they would like that to...
I believe they were amenable to it.
They're amenable, so, okay. No need to do that.
The body would like to make the motion with that amendment.
If you want to make a motion with that as an amendment?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for approval with the amendment to allow the applicant the opportunity to expand the hours to reflect the hours of the airport.
Great, we have a motion. Commissioner Bartow?
Good second.
We have a motion in seconds. Let's call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, congratulations to the applicant. Moving on, staff and commissioner items. Item number six, motions for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Item number seven, a report by the community development director or a request for matters which a planning commissioner would like to be placed on a future agenda. Simone or Jaime?
Good evening, Jaime Moriel, acting deputy director. Just want to note that the next planning commission meeting will be a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, June fifth.
Great. Thank you. Let's see, anybody in the audience like to wish, wish to comment on that item? Seeing none. Request for excused absences. We have any requests for excused absences? No, I like that. For dedication is fantastic, commissioners, well done. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.